Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Hello. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting, May 6, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young. Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I move to excuse the absence of Councilmember Young.
Motion by Mr. Fantini, second by Ms. Hubig, to excuse Councilmember Young. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, first up, Item 3, Announcements and Committee Reports. A few announcements from me. I'll try to keep it brief, but I got a page of them. So, first of all, I need to remove Item 7G. So, that's a contract. We found a significant math error on there, so maybe you didn't find that, Council, but we want to make sure it's correct, and we'll bring it back next week. Happy May. Some upcoming dates to remember. Military Spouse Appreciation Day is Friday, the 10th. Have quite a few in A-Town, and I have a particular one that I'm a favor here in A-Town, but also a number of loved ones currently deployed with some of those military spouses here in town. And of course, don't forget Mom this Sunday, the 12th, which is Mother's Day. A-Town sign, you probably noticed it's back up, and it's looking better than ever. I'd like to thank the Anacortes Downtown Alliance and the Parks Department for leading that effort. I know there was a lot of other folks involved. A-Town is our town. Our publication should be hitting your mailbox by the end of this week. Tomorrow, there will be a presentation at the Senior Center by Irwin Development LLC, and it'll be hosting an informal meeting, again, tomorrow, May 7th, to present their proposal to use approximately five acres of city-owned property near Sharp's Corner for multifamily housing. This unsolicited proposal would include affordable units as well as market rate units. The developer will present the proposal to the public at 6:30 at the Anacortes Senior Activity Center. The city council has not reviewed this proposal, and the city has not approved the use of city-owned land for anything. The proponent has not determined if they will request a lease or request purchase of the city-owned land. This meeting will be an opportunity for the public to provide feedback on the issues while allowing more, while allowing a quorum of council members to see this issue. There have been no applications, and hopefully it will be only the first of many potential concepts. As the city evaluates, as we determine the highest and best use of this land, we're conducting a study this year that should help shape how we review those future concepts. I'd like to publicly thank a lot of community for a quick response to implement a spinach eradication plan on R. from council members, and I know fielded a number of complaints I did as well about cabbage or spinach growing in the new construction landcapes of R. Avenue. Public Works, Parks, and the contractor, and Western, or Washington State University Skagitik Extension, and the ag community all came together. Seems the contractor had some undercooked compost that had spinach seeds in it. While it not only looked bad, it actually could pose a threat to our very important valley spinach seed businesses, so we are taking care of that. Board of Skagitik County Commissioners will host a public meeting on the proposed solid waste rates on Tuesday, May 21st, at 8:30 a.m. That's the 21st Commissioner's Hearing Room, and that has to do with the solid waste tipping fees. And final announcement, the Anacortes Boat and Yacht Show featuring Trawler Fest is looking for volunteers Thursday, May 16th to May 18th, so that's coming up right away at Cap Santa Marina for this fun and educational show. Work a shift or two and get free admission to all days of the show, and drink voucher at some local establishments. Shifts start 10 a.m. and 2 p.m. each day, with assignments being, training beginning 30 minutes before. So greet your friends and neighbors and make new ones while enjoying all things boating. Contact the Anacortes Chamber of Commerce for details. Okay, so that was all from me, and only took a couple of minutes. All right, next up, Finance Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
We actually had two Finance Committee meetings in the two weeks that we were away. The first one was scheduled on the Thursday, and I believe Mr. McDougall was the only one who attended it. But, so if maybe he can speak to that, that'd be great. But we also had a Finance Committee meeting late last week where we heard a bit about a proposed community survey to gather budget priorities. The goal is to actually have it completed for council retreat. There were about nine to 11 options, choosing the top seven and ranking them, such as pavement management, infrastructure, whether people want an event center, library, parks, senior center, and all of those things. And, you know, also about fiscal planning for the inevitable inflation, public safety, human services. From our conversation at a committee level, we determined it's challenging to articulate the scope and associated costs with all of those priorities without having a more in-depth presentation to the public. Anywhere from, you know, an event center that might cost initial thoughts of $6 million to public infrastructure, such as our sewer system, could cost millions of dollars. And asking people to kind of just quickly rank them didn't quite seem like something we wanted to rush in the next month. So I think that from our discussion at a committee level, we would like to suggest that council schedule an opportunity during our next council meeting to spend 10 or 15 minutes discussing what we would like to see at our council retreat in June. Some of the things that we brought up were, you know, some of our R&amp;R funds that have been reduced to 50% replacement costs. Obviously, that doesn't include utilities, but some of the other. Also about the fact that, in theory, we've been talking about bonding our large program for fiber at the end of this year. That's going to be about six months away, and some other issues. So maybe we can add that to the schedule for the next week.
Okay.
Mr. McDougall.
Thank you.
Thanks for waving.
Yeah. Thanks, Ms. Cleland McGrath. There was a brief meeting on April 25th, and Finance, well, I was there, spoke with Mr. Hugland, and we discussed basically the lower building activity that we've seen in the last 15, 16 months, and the resulting sort of lower permit and sales tax revenue. So, building activity counts for normally about 20 to 25% of our sales tax. So I think that number is going to go down a bit this year. We've also seen a shift in 2024 to almost entirely cottage and ADU development. There's only been one single-family home permitted so far this year. And basically, you know, we decided because sales tax is a trailing metric, to keep an eye on it the next couple quarters, see how much of a dip we're seeing in our sales tax revenue. And then Ms. Cleland McGrath actually had shared some real estate sales data, and basically we're seeing this correlation of average price per square foot is going up, but the average actual home sale price went down by nearly 10%. So which means essentially, like, you know, smaller units cost less, even though the price per square foot is going up, it's not going up faster to offset that. So it's not exactly affordable housing, per se, but it is less expensive housing on average this year.
All right, thank you. Next up is Housing Affordability Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Our committee met on May 2nd, and we talked a little bit about the Habitat Project, which we'll hear about in more detail tonight, and about reducing the number of units from five units to three units, if that would change the requirements of infrastructure improvements in that neighborhood. And that is to be determined with a future meeting with the Development Review Group, to be sure about that. We also talked if it's necessary to pave the alley, and that is also to be determined. So there's still a lot that needs to be determined regarding the requirements of that project proposal. We also spent some time planning for our May 9th meeting with the State Senate Committee on Land Use, Government, and Tribal Relations that's happening. It'll be this Thursday, and we'll be meeting with legislators, and they will be touring some properties around town, some affordable housing properties, like the Skagitik Commons, which is more of a not affordable housing, per se, but a denser housing development and a different model, and then has been used in the past, also the Samish Affordable Housing Cottage Development that's happening. We talked about a request from a local developer to reduce the size constraint from, or increase the size of a small unit from 600 square feet to 650 square feet in order to qualify for the height bonus. And we talked a little bit about our stormwater master plan that's happening this year, and that is pretty much, we had a brief, brief talk about multifamily tax exemption and where that's been adopted in other cities like Bellingham. So we were kind of all over the place. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Public Works Committee met just before this meeting, Ms. Moulton and myself. Mr. Young was absent. First of all, we talked about traffic safety issues and parking issues that formally came to the Traffic Safety Committee. It was a year or so ago that we absorbed the Traffic Safety Committee into the Public Works Committee. And we wanted to talk about a process for articulating when those types of concerns need to come to the committee at all, and then how they get to city council, and how they get reviewed by staff. And so staff brought to us an idea, which we are going to reduce to a proposed change to the council procedures, so that that amendment will come forward to council in the next many weeks, for council to review how we might handle these traffic safety and parking issues. In short, though, they all come through to Public Works in one way or another. Public Works would review those with staff, including engineering, including outside engineers as necessary, including with the Streets Group, including with APD Traffic Group, and then make a recommendation, or handle it. In many cases, they don't require, these issues don't require council involvement at all. And some of them, notably parking, because that requires a change of the parking code, ones that require capital investment, because that requires budget, some of the traffic issues, including one-way streets or speed limits, those require changes to the code, those have to come to city council. And so those would make their way to the Public Works Committee, and Public Works Committee would make a recommendation on that. The recommendation would then come to city council. But we also had a conversation about, at least seen on some high level, all of those types of concerns that come in from the public, so that we know where we need to be making other investments that are not necessarily in the budget or the capital facilities plan. We also talked about the Habitat Project as a further review of the stormwater issue with specificity. And so in that area, there are existing piping, ditches, and culverts that are, have limited capacity. The amount of stormwater to manage changes if council reduces the number to three. Three houses has been, has been proposed. But the existing system is obviously not at our city's standards. We don't have curb gutter sidewalk everywhere. So we talked about it with respect to the Habitat Project, but we also talked about it with respect to entirety of the rest of the city, because it's a citywide problem. We don't have a financing mechanism for those fixes, whether the city were to pursue fixes in the various parts of town that have, with especially stormwater problems, or if private development needed to pursue those fixes. We don't have a latecomers agreement mechanism. So, and then the other problem is that development is not sufficient to pay for it. In some cases, the cost of a stormwater fix might be in millions of dollars, and it might be triggered by addition of just a couple of houses, and those houses are not going to each, hopefully, sell for a couple million dollars apiece. So if you want to reduce the cost of housing, how do you cover the infrastructure cost without just pushing it onto what could otherwise be closer to affordable housing? And it's not just, it's not just the pumps and pipes, because Public Works has a stormwater planning process that is going to come forward. It's that financing mechanism as well that's really important. So those are some of the things that we talked about in the Public Works Committee. Now, I also met with the North Star Housing Work Group last Monday, when we didn't have a council meeting, and the North Star Housing Work Group has three top priorities for local government, all of the cities and the county, but mostly the cities, for housing development going forward. Number one is to allow mixed-use development outright in commercially zoned transit-served corridors. Anacortes largely already checks that box. Mount Vernon, the largest city in the county, and the largest urban growth area, does not. So that's going to be a real focus in the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update countywide. Number two is to adopt by right permitting in residential zones, and Anacortes already has checked that box, too, and Burlington, I think, is there or is close. Mount Vernon has some work to do, and Seadrily as well. And then reduction in parking requirements, especially for affordable housing projects and housing located in transit-accessible areas. This is a big concept statewide, but the transit here is not really sufficient to reduce parking requirements. On the other hand, some cities, again, Mount Vernon, have a very large parking requirement for housing. So they are, again, targeted for needing to work on that in service of all of our housing goals countywide. And then finally, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met, and we met to consider the Chambers Tent Application, which is later on on the agenda tonight. So we'll talk about that then.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Just wanted to follow up on, on two things to that, because this is our open public forum, where we can discuss the things that go on in committee meetings. I just wanted to say that I very much am in support of changing the parking and traffic issues to just being in committee, to the things that can't be fixed through the staff, to coming to full council, because I know that all of us on council, it's probably one of the things that I get the most emails about, and not being on that committee and being able to provide input to that. I'm very much in support of the traffic and parking issues, even regularly coming before council. So I'm really glad to hear that that's, that that's being discussed in committee. The other thing that I wanted to mention, I know we'll get more into the Habitat later, is I totally agree with Councilman Walters that there's a lot of areas where there are sidewalk deficiencies and the development that comes in there. You know, we look at developers to take that up. I know Director Remain is kind of working on a plan to how we're going to prioritize where sidewalks should be put, where street fixes should happen. One of the things that I hope gets considered, as this is talked about in committee, is there are areas, such as the Lower West Streets, where development there, apart from this Habitat for Humanity project, is pretty much done. Unless we're going to go into the Forest Lands, which I don't think we will do, development pretty much there is done. So I hope that we look at areas that have been developed and are, and are ripe for kind of fixing the streets, fixing the sidewalks, other than areas that maybe there's going to be major development to for the next 10 years. I just hope that factors in as that's being discussed in committee.
All right. Any other council or committee reports?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath, and I think, was that Mr. McDougall? Oh, Mr. Fantini, okay.
I just wanted to add one last thing to the HACS meeting that we had on Thursday. We did discuss a little bit about the, the presentation that a private developer is going to do at the Senior Center tomorrow, from 6:00 to 8:30. And just wanted to clarify that what came out of that meeting is the fact that I believe the council, when we went through the, or the budget for 2024, requested $25,000 to be put aside for a feasibility study for Sharp's Corner. And at least from our discussion at the Planning Committee level, we would like to see that move forward in a timely manner this year. That's all.
Yeah, and that study is moving forward.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini, thank you.
I just wanted to give a really quick shout-out to the staff at the wastewater treatment plant here in Anacortes. Being the newest member, I'm trying to get out and see all the different departments and tour all the facilities, and I had an opportunity last Wednesday to walk through the wastewater treatment plant with plant manager Brian Walker, as well as Corinne and Steve Dobler, who I don't think I've seen since Joe Ferrin's Principles Technology class my senior year of high school. But it was really interesting to, to learn about how that plant operates. One of, a couple of takeaways for me, one, the amount of ingenuity that exists in the staff and teams there. You know, there were several examples of areas where maybe the city would have had to spend money by contracting out certain projects, but they were able to be handled in-house by the ingenuity of the, the staff there. I mean, obviously, there's still times when they have to request for outside contractors, but I thought that was great. And the other thing that, that really struck me is the tenure of a lot of the employees that work there. So, you know, and, and you could tell, walking around the plant, there's a very strong positive culture there. And I think that is something that should be applauded, because, you know, we all have jobs, right? And anytime that you're going to go to work, you want to enjoy where you go to work. And it was just very evident from talking with the staff there, the directors, they all love what they do and love the people that they work with. And I think that says a lot when we're talking about the wastewater treatment plan.
Thank you for that. Any other announcements or committee reports? Okay, next up is Item 3D. This is Anacortes Arts Commission Appointment, and I am requesting council confirm my appointment of Kami Bratton to the Anacortes Arts Commission. And I always say that I appreciate all the contributions of our volunteers that are willing to serve on various committees and commissions. We can't do it without that support. So Kami Bratton is replacing Diane Marr for the remainder of her term, which goes through December, December 31st, 2025. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I move approval of the appointment.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Hubig to appoint Kami Bratton to the Anacortes Arts Commission. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are on to item number four. This is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on anything that is not on our agenda, and again, I'll remind the public that's shown up in force, which is fantastic, that the Habitat item is going to be our first other business, Item 7A. So a couple of things to get through there. So if you've signed up for that, I'm going to ask you to wait for that, because I've got Rose Malin and I think Tom Sweeney to comment on Habitat. So we'll wait until we get there. But first, I've got Mary LaFleur, who, the topic is council activities, and please limit your comments to three minutes, because we value everyone's time here. And, and make sure the microphone is on.
There we go.
And name and city you live in, of course.
Mary LaFleur, Anacortes, Washington. Good evening, Mayor Miller, council and community. I talked to a lot of people in the community, as you all know, in, in all different walks of life. You are a very popular council. Now more than ever, people are coming out to see and hear what you are doing. This should be a flag. The more folks that are coming out, the more unhappy your constituents are. The numbers are much higher, as most don't come out. People come and speak passionately about their feelings to you, and you vote the opposite of what the folks are telling you. You were voted to serve our community, not forcing your agenda on our community. Let the people be polled on issues. You have all of our information. You can do that. With positive approval on projects, you will have support instead of resistance, possibly even funding, like the family centers, school, police, and fire. You work against our mayor instead of beside him. It is hard to work with your hands tied behind your back. If you want votes, go out and do things to earn the votes. The council has a sub-council operating within it. It's not right. People in the community watch what you say and do, and they look back on the meetings, like the roundabout at Safeway. Mr. Walters spearheaded, then took credit for canceling it after $500,000 almost was spent.
Order, please.
Democrats and Republicans love this town. We have managed to live together for generations before you. I know that all of you are Democrats, and that's fine, but I do not believe in either side having all the power. This is the result we are getting. It should be a balance of power, so that the citizens work together. You cannot serve one side or the other effectively. Go to work every day pleasing 80% of our citizens. This gives you a 20% failure rate. Most companies would fire you. Right now, you're not even pleasing 50%. I know a lot of old-school Democrats that are not happy. You are certainly not pleasing the Republicans, who are 50%. Who are you pleasing? Yourselves, your agendas, or your political possible futures? You have made decisions that the public has come out to tell you not to do. Short-term rental issues, building an event center in the Marina, a roundabout at Safeway, completely taking away the rights of an investor of the theater building. The poor woman who owns the theater building lost her husband and wants to sell that property. Why should a building owner have to have five years' theater experience? If you buy a yarn shop, should you be a knitter for five years? Does this make sense to you? There seems like there's an ulterior motive. In talks with the theater business owner, this happened in Ocean Shores. The city wanted to buy the building for their offices, and the town came out in a robust way and said, "No, that will happen here." If that's your motive, then just buy the building and work with the theater to help them. Don't take their rights away. Maybe the city should buy that building. Meanwhile, real investors that know what they're doing, like MJB, wait to go through your process at a cost for delays to them that are great and frustrating. Is it because you are smarter than them? Their, their track record speaks for itself. You are attempting to push through low-income housing units in hundreds that don't make sense in Anacortes. We're an island. With only a few roads and high volume of tourists that bring in big dollars to our town, you are ruining the quality of life for those that live here by overpopulation. If they live outside of town, they shop at stores that are more affordable for them. They have more entertainment for their kids, childcare, other services, and their needs. You are not taking their best interests in mind. You are setting them up to fail. Many work here because they make more money, and they can take that money home and save money.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And again, please, no. So I'll have to explain, we, we do not actually appreciate applause, because it, it's hard enough to publicly speak, even for me, when, so it's respectful to respect all opinions that you non-applaud or jeer or anything like that when folks are speaking to council. So thank you for that. I have, I always go to who signed up first, and I've got Suzanne Roner, and I think it says uncomments. A UN comment. So also council procedure says it has to be pertaining to Anacortes. So comments pertaining to Anacortes.
Stop me if you don't think it applies.
I'll, I'll do my best. This is, this is a hard area, but.
Okay. Suzanne Roner, Anacortes, thank you for this opportunity. I have to talk really fast, because I have a lot to say, and when I talk fast, I talk loud. I'm not yelling, I'm just going fast. My comments are in response to a comment made by the member of the public expressing concerns about the UN influence in our daily life here in Anacortes. This was dismissed by council member. I would like to add the following. Much like a hammer looking for a nail, the UN is a one-world government wannabe looking for a crisis. Any crisis will do. War, climate change, pandemics, anything that would justify their authoritarian stance that a one-world government is the only solution to the crisis. Fun facts about the UN. The US and UN system of government are incompatible. The US Constitution protects our basic rights, which come from God, and cannot be overruled by government. The UN's stance on basic rights is that they are granted by government and can be canceled. There is no recognition of God. The UN seeks to disarm Americans. The UN lawlessly meddles in the, in its members' domestic affairs. Every UN Secretary General has been a communist or socialist. Article 25 of the UN Charter violates the.
Mayor Miller, point of order.
Mr., Mr. Walters.
The council procedures, as you mentioned before the speaker began, do have a constraint on what, I, I look up the provision, but. I ask the chair to rule on the point of order.
Thirty, thirty seconds, Ms. Roner.
I'm just, you're actually, Mr. Walters, your response to the comment made by the citizen is what prompted me to bring this up. So every UN secretary-general has been a communist or socialist. Article 25 of the UN Charter violates the Constitution of the United States. It reads, "The members of the UN agree to accept and carry out the decisions of the UN Security Council in accordance with the present charter." This is a blatant violation of US sovereignty. The United States bows to no one. The UN controls our nation's military. The UN directed the Korean War. CITO, a UN regional alliance, directed the Vietnam War. Congress declared neither of these two wars as required by the US Constitution.
All right, thank, thank you very much.
Am I done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and again, we'll have order in the council chambers. Okay, I don't have anybody else signed up. Again, I've got Rose Mallon and Tom Sweeney for Habitat, but you wanna come up and speak, please. And again, I realize that's a, it's difficult to separate out things that are germane to Anacortes, but that was a procedure that was voted on by council a few months ago.
This is definitely germane to Anacortes.
Okay, and state your name and the city you live in, please.
Allen Hansen.
And make sure that you're close enough to the microphone, so we can hear you.
Good. Title of my thing is, "Anacortes and Skagit County Property Tax Increases Are Leading to Increases in Rent." Fall/Winter 2023 Edition of A-Town has an article entitled Housing Update. It starts out saying, "The City of Anacortes takes affordable housing problems very seriously and is committed to searching for solutions to the housing affordability problems in Anacortes." Articles in the Anacortes American State that the Port of Anacortes, Island Hospital, and the School District all propose a 1% property level increase for the year. City of Anacortes has already raised its tax levy in August. Who is next to raise their level? Fire District, Parks and Recreation, Federal Pool, Library, et cetera. County is also proposing a 1% increase to our property tax, which will affect all homes in the county. There are also proposed legislative priorities, which would instruct the city to lobby for raising the property tax cap to 3% instead of the current 1% cap. Then there are bond issues. We already have existing bonds we are supporting. Can you see a new event center, city hall, trestle, storm sewer system, sidewalks, or other bonds and levies in the future? Increased affordable housing levels? Another possible request for funding is additional financing for the Anacortes Fiber Optics Project. Funds are available to cover current liabilities to the end of 2024, but it is estimated that a refinancing source will be required sometime late in '24 and '25. Will this project be able to pay back the funds it already took from the general fund? Will it be able to support itself when it's finished, or will it be a continuous drain on other city funds? Funding sources being considered are city lodging tax revenue, 20-year general obligation bonds from the city, state funds, or even legislative appropriation. Where will this money come from but from the people? City of Anacortes, in a recent planning presentation, stated its city is expected to grow from 17,983 residents in 2022 to 22,971 residents in 2045, a 27% increase. I moved here in 2004, when it was a nice, quiet, small town. Where has that quiet community gone? I do not know who you're talking to, but people I talk to do not like it with all this excessive growth. Where will all these people live? We are getting short on trees to cut down. And who wants more four- and five-story apartments, duplexes, ancillary, accessory dwelling units, townhomes, and multifamily units? What will be demands on the new infrastructure and utilities we've always heard about tonight? A new metropolitan park district at which cost? Another 1% tax increase every year? All these increases may not be large individually, but added together, they are prohibitive to keeping rents under control. When you add this to increase in property insurance, you can see why rents must increase to allow landlords to afford to keep their properties. Or are we supposed to operate rentals at a loss? Ask any business owner how long they can operate at a loss. Do not expect revenues and taxes at the current rate to pay for new facilities, municipal workers, staff, and maintenance. Even new businesses cannot keep up with rising costs. Cities think new businesses can pay for future costs. That is a wrong idea. It's a spiral that does not end. Get new businesses, it costs more. New businesses, it costs more. Can we not have a small, quiet town to live in? Do we have to become an Everett or Burlington with all our crime and problems? Make no mistake, we love our city, but do you have to ask why we do not have affordable housing in Anacortes? Now you know with all these costs. I'd propose any new facilities, new proposals, even to the five and 10-year out, be looked at, and all the costs put together. We're doing this piecemeal. So, oh yeah, 1% cost here. Oh, that's okay, we'll pass it.
I think council has heard you, and time's up.
But it does pertain to Anacortes, I guess.
No, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wish to address the council on anything that is not on our agenda? Okay, we are moving on, which, I forgot our online participants, sorry. And, okay, we are moving on to item five, which is our consent agenda, items 5A through E, council. No, we have not. We'll get there. And, oh, I know there's a lot of folks here that are gonna speak to that. So council consent agenda, it's coming up.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini, I think, was first.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Fantini, a second by Ms. Hubig to approve consent agenda items A through E. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So next item is item six. We have two public hearings, 6A and 6B, and then after that, we'll get to the other business, Habitat for Humanity. So first public hearing is for amendments, amendment to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, 2023/2027 Consolidated Plan. And Ms. Snyder? Oh, yeah, there you are. Yeah, you gotta come on up. See, I usually drag it out long enough for you to work your way up here to present it. Sorry, we didn't coordinate that part of the detail. But Ms. Snyder.
Hello, Mayor Miller. Tonight, we are looking for.
And make sure you're close enough to the microphone, and it's on, it's got a light on it.
Can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Perfect. Well, the consolidated plan for CDBG, that is an entitlement block grant for the City of Anacortes, has a five-year consolidated plan that was passed February 27th in 2023. And the framework to support the five-year plan is our annual action plan. This year for 2024, we discovered that we were missing two elements on our consolidated plan, and we would like to make an amendment to the five-year plan, bringing forth one objective, that is to support efforts to expand opportunities for persons with disabilities, and also to update our funding resources from prior years in the amount of $51,468. The consolidated plan, just so everybody knows what it is, is a data-driven investment decision to spend the $104,537 issued by HUD to the City of Anacortes.
All right, yeah, pretty straightforward. This is a public hearing, and it will remain open for a second public hearing, but any members of the public wish to address council on the CDBG block grant changes? Okay, so we'll keep the public hearing open. Thank you, Ms. Snyder, and we will go on to item 6B. This is a public hearing on setting water rate use efficiency goals for 2024 to 2023. Mr. Rayum. And Water Team.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and the community. I'm just here to introduce Brian McDaniel, the Water System Manager. He's actually leaving us anyways on June 3rd, but we're gonna get one last night out of him to present the presentation he's about to give.
Yeah, I was wondering if we were gonna be able to get that on this one, or on the later contract, but we can, we can take him here. Mr. McDaniel, happy to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public, for coming out for our water use efficiency goal-setting. This is fantastic. Okay, the first thing I'd like to start off with is, our water is safe to drink. We produce very high-quality water at an ample quantity, and it is safe to drink. The Washington State Department of Health has rules and regulations that we must follow, and one of those rules and regulations to protect public health is a water use efficiency program. They like to have all water systems in the state adopt a water use efficiency program and adopt water use efficiency goals. These goals and water use efficiency programs must be included in the water system comp plan. So during this development, there are several steps in the programs. And so each utility must evaluate the current water conservation program for its effectiveness. We establish water use efficiency goals, supporting the program, and we include one or more of the quantifiable types of goals. We identify measures to meet those goals and how we're going to do those. We evaluate those effectiveness, and then project water savings from those measures. We fund the water use efficiency measures and educate our community about the benefits of conservation. The Anacortes Water System Water Use Efficiency Program has a couple of objectives. It's to reduce overall water consumption by implementing a multifaceted program which encourages conservation. This is also along, helps us with long-term water supply reliability. It promotes responsible stewardship by fostering a culture of conservation amongst residents and businesses. The program contributes significantly to the state's water resource management goals. The state is taking it very seriously about our water conservation measures, and this is one way to do that. We also foster that culture of environmental stewardship. For the City of Anacortes, in 2016 through 2021, June 2016, adopted a goal of to decrease residential water consumption by 917,500 gallons per year for the six-year period. I'm happy to report that as we evaluated that goal, that we surpassed that goal overall with a 1.2 reduction in consumption for each year of that program. So that's a success story. On the, there's two sides of this water use efficiency. We have the demand side, and we have the supply side. On the demand side is where the consumers consume the water, but on the supply side is from the water treatment plant all the way up to those water meters. Some of the measures included, on the demand side, we offered a $50 rebate for water-efficient fixtures and appliances, washing machines, toilets and dishwashers. We also distributed a lot of showerheads and shower timers. We had Russ Pittis with us at the time, which was helping us with our water conservation education program. On the supply side, over that period, we did some really cool things. We installed a fiber optic cable in our water transmission mains, which also included a leak detection system, so we could detect leaks sooner. In concert with that, we also launched a portable unit where our water distribution teams can actually go out and survey areas of the water distribution system with the, with the smaller pipes. So for the next reporting period, we have pulled together what we think is the reasonable goal for conserving water of 1.162 gallons per year. So effectively, that is about 65 gallons per person per year. On the supply side, as we produce, we're going to keep our water to below 10% or less of total water produced. Couple of ways we're going to do that on the demand side. We're gonna continue the showerhead replacement program, give away some shower timers, toilet leak detection diaper tablets, some community outreach. We're gonna develop our community outreach program. Consumption history, continue the consumption history on our water utility bills. We have a water leak notification component. With our rate structure, it encourages water conservation, and then also continuing the irrigation timer and appliance rebate programs. So on the supply side, we're gonna continue our leak detection with our fiber optic system within the transmission main, and then on the distribution side, we're going to continue that portable leak detection surveying throughout our system. So each year, the city must track and evaluate how we're doing on these goals, and we do this through reporting through the Water Use Efficiency Rule, where we produce a report and compare our goals to what we actually conserve. And as we go through that program, we can adjust our program to kind of make sure that we're following track and tracking along with that. Cost, it comes down to cost. The program's estimated about $9,000 annually. $2,000 of that is water efficiency products, some of those showerheads and timers that we were talking about, or, excuse me, the $7,000 is. We're not putting a price against the community outreach or the water leak notification component. The efficiency products are the showerheads, timers, toilet leak detections. We use a vendor, Cascade Water Alliance, has some components that we use, that we purchase some of the supplies from. Additional products could be added to the program, such as hose timers and nozzles and those sort of things. The city has a current supply remaining from our prior program of leak detection tablets and shower timers. This was the slide that I found the most interesting, and I know everybody is just on the edge of their seat waiting to hear this. But what we did is we pulled a table together to establish these goals and the amounts of where we would actually conserve and what we could expect from that. In the 2024 column, you'll notice at the very bottom, if you go down to the blue, is 1.162 million gallons that we estimated that we would conserve, and we're projecting out through the program of what that conservation actually is. There are a couple of big wins in here, in the center of the column with the water leak notification. This has contributed to our AMI water meter reading system. This is where we can understand and find leaks that are happening immediately versus waiting 30 days to get that information. If a customer has a leak, we actually pick up the phone and call them, and stopping that leak from just wasting water. So we put some numbers to what that leak notification credit might be, and it's a pretty substantial savings. We projected that out as the launch, as we increase and build out the AMI system, but it's going to be very interesting to see those projections and see what we can actually conserve as we move through the program. The other big, big win here is the appliance rebate and irrigation timer component. Some pretty big savings there with residents being able to upgrade their irrigation timer, get a little credit for that, to upgrade to some of the water-smart type technology. So as we mentioned, the funding of this currently needs about $9,000 annually, and we have this funded through our water rates, so there's no increase in water rates. The maintenance and operation budgets currently can support this. We have some education and community outreach benefits. We have an annual consumer confidence report coming out, which is this week. It's how we're doing with our water requirement from the government. The social media, Joan Pringle has put together a city conservation page that's been fired up and getting ready to launch after this evening. It will go live. Our Public Works Facebook page, we'll have some information going out on that. We also go out to schools with Public Works Open House, talk about water conservation. Island View Elementary Science Workshop, and other programs at the schools. Couple of community events that we'll be attending, Anacortes Earth Day Celebration, which was a couple weeks ago, we attended that, and then the Waterfront Festival, and so on, as we go through the program. We're getting to the action items, so in order for us to adopt the goals, we provide the copies and public comment for the water use efficiency program that we have proposed this evening. We're presenting that and here to answer questions from the public. And then once, once we close the hearing and the council adopts the water use efficiency goal for the program, we'll add that to the water system plan. And so with that.
All right, yeah, good handover, and this is a public hearing, and so we'll request any members of the public that wish to address the council on this, on this public hearing. Okay, all right, come on up. I think you know the drill. Name and city, please.
Allen Hansen, Anacortes. Just quick.
Just quick, do we have any kind of an update or reading on the microplastics in the water we have now? I know the water's good. I like it. I love the water. I've lived many places and this is very good water. Second thing is how are the addition of another 4,000 or 5,000 people to the community going to affect the reduction of water usage we're supposed to be getting to?
Mr. McDaniel, you want to take a stab at those?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
So I mentioned earlier in the presentation about the annual consumer confidence report. Within that consumer confidence report, it will talk about what is in the water and some of the components that the city tests for throughout the year and what is actually in that. And some of those components are microplastics. As far as the growth projections, there are growth projections put into the formula for our water conservation because it's based on populace, so hopefully that answers the question.
Okay, any other member of the public? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mayor Miller.
Turn it over to council. Yeah, that's how, yeah, that's okay. Okay, public hearing is closed and now council discuss or adopt. Mr. Fantini.
Mayor Miller, yeah, I just had a couple of questions as I read through everything. How do people apply for that water rebate when it comes to like the appliance rebates or things like that? Like, are you seeing a large number of people apply for those? Can anybody do that?
So I'll take this in two parts if that's okay.
Please.
How to apply for the rebates, when the webpage gets, turns on live, you'll actually be able to apply through the webpage. It's very easy. You can apply for it. You produce your receipt. Now, as far as the prior program, I'm going to ask Joan Pringle, administrative assistant, to help me out with the number of rebates that have been processed over the last couple of years. Joan, do you mind helping us out with that?
Okay, so when Russ Pittis was working with water conservation and everything, he really promoted the program and he had quite a few people applying for the rebates. But as he went away and his position went away and everything, the promotion of that kind of dwindled and I took over handing out those rebates and everything. I just go through our regular invoicing program and everything and there were very few. And so I hope to bring that up again and everything, get a lot more people interested in getting water efficient appliances and applying for the rebates.
Thank you. And one other question, and this is probably actually in the same vein. I guess that's probably how people find out about the showerheads and everything too. Like, do we, I know we've done some mailings with our Public Works bills that go out. Do we do that kind of thing at all? Have we thought about doing that?
Yeah, we leverage some of those outlets as well. Some of the community events that we have, we pass out the showerheads and the shower timers and that's where we try to get those numbers passed out so people can actually install those and that's where we see the actual water conservation savings within those. And yeah, those are sent out within some of the publications. We will jump into A-Town as needed to get some of that message out about what is available for those water conservation items. We also keep them at City Hall.
Okay, and just one last question. Since the program's been going on since, was it 2021 you said about? Okay, so you know, I feel like with anything, when it starts, there's a huge influx of people that want the new stuff and you know, get the rebates and do all of that. Without going into the weeds too much, are you expecting kind of those numbers for rebates, for people requesting the showerheads, the irrigation reduction, are you expecting that to go up? And if so, is that, because it sounds like maybe we need to do some more engagement in a way?
Yes, and we do expect those to go up. And with more of the publications going out, as Joan mentioned, is we start getting the information out there that it's available, talking with local suppliers of those products and getting in the local retail stores and letting them know about the programs. And we're hoping to, we're hoping to hit the mark on the budget every year. That's our goal is to hit those budgetary marks, so that would be a big success. It would be really nice to come back to council and ask to ship some funds over for the program to increase it, so.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McDaniel, and I'd like to say you will be greatly missed. Thank you for all your excellent work on behalf of the city and our citizens and our good drinking water. One of the things I'm gratified by is $9,000 seems like a small, seems like we get a really good return on our investment, so I applaud those efforts. Another thing I was heartened to see is that 2023 shows the lowest percentage of unaccounted water loss in the eight years that are represented there. It's down to 1.4% when it's been as high as 7.9%. Could you speak to a little about, speak a little to why 2023, we had such a great low number?
So the portion of the program that we're looking at is the distribution system leakage. And so we are required by regulation to stay below 10%. The 2023 numbers, we attribute that to a couple of key water meters being replaced and accounting for every drop that went through the water meters. So we researched that many different ways. The consultant was looking at it as well and they couldn't understand how we were able to get down to that low percentage. But historically, as we've gone back through and replaced some of those key water meters and aging meters that are stopped working on us, we were able to get those numbers back down. So great question. Did I answer that for you?
That's great, thank you.
Other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
With respect to the appliance rebate, my question is really, did we ever run up against the annual quantity limit in the past? And do we anticipate running up against the limit going forward?
The couple of years that I researched myself, we did not bump up against the maximum appliance rebate number. We've not hit that yet.
Do you have any sense of where you were there? If there's 70 and they're $50, what if you did 35 and 100, like, would you save more water?
They were under 20.
Under 20?
Under 20.
So that.
Yeah.
I mean, especially if you're talking to a washing machine, it's not clear to me that $50 is necessarily a sufficient incentive to go from a lower level machine to a more energy efficient and more water efficient machine.
Yeah, and that's where the irrigation timers, we added that component to it, the WaterSense group. I think that we're going to see a little more excitement in using some of that type of technology. Not everybody replaces their washing machine every year. The program's there for you to use that. We want to make sure that people do use that. The irrigation timer is a kind of a part of the program that's not been exercised before and we think that we're going to get the largest return on that for water use efficiency as irrigation clocks get put in and they're tied into the weather station so that they water smartly.
And irrigation timers might be cheap enough that it's worthwhile just replacing your fully functional irrigation timer?
That's our, that's our hope. That's our hope. Other programs have seen great returns in that.
Well, I agree with Mr. Fantini. It will definitely be the level of promotion that we do. If nobody knows about the program, nobody can take advantage of it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, or Mr. McDaniel's looking for adoption of this plan so we can move forward and provide those. And again, I appreciate that Navy showers weren't part of that plan and so some of my fellow Navy vets understand that, but NCO sailors too.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. I'd make a motion to adopt the 2423, sorry, the 2024 to 2023 water use efficiency goal.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Hubick and a second by Mr. Fantini to adopt the 2024 to 2030 water use efficiency goals. Mr. Franciac, vote. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. McDaniel, if you're not up for the other contract coming up, I would like to publicly thank you again for your service to Anacortes and service outside. To remind the public, we serve 56,000 water customers from our plant and also your service as my interim Public Works Director also well appreciated, so thank you again.
Mayor Miller.
Thank you very much. It's been my pleasure.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. And I just want to acknowledge the fact that when you got here, we went, we had zero Level 4 operators for a period of time and you were able to cultivate on a really amazing water treatment plant. And now we are up to six, is that correct, when you leave? So we have six Level 4, which is a huge deal. We should be very excited and relieved that we have this level of expertise and redundancy so that folks can, you know, do all of that work. So thank you so much for all of your hard work.
Yeah, you can applaud this one. We might have him back up here for another contract. We'll see. Okay, well, that action is complete and we are on to item seven, which is other business. 7A, I think what a lot of you have been patiently waiting for, so thank you for your patience. Habitat for Humanity Lease of City-Owned Property on West Fifth Street. This is a discussion item only. So our primary staff contact, Mr. Coleman, is under the weather this evening. But Ms. Tate, if you want to start working your way up and I will, our other contacts for this one are Mr. Walters and Ms. Moulton. So if either one of you want to jump in as Ms. Tate is setting up her slides. Okay, we'll let Ms. Tate go and welcome again.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, council members. I appreciate your having me here to present once more on the Habitat program and what we do, how we can help people buy homes in a market that is completely out of range for most citizens in Anacortes. I want to start by talking about, you know, the overall program and what we do and how we can help people into home ownership. So one in seven families spend more than 50% of their income on housing. Usually that's rental. Forty-six point two percent of Skagit County renters are moderately or severely cost burdened and spending up to 49.9% of their gross income on housing. Inferical research has substantiated many links between housing quality and physical health, especially for children. There is no more effective way to retain an inflation, rein in inflation than to expand the supply of affordable housing and increase housing affordability. And I just want to reiterate in this piece that children, particularly when a family owns their home and has that kind of stability and is not in an apartment complex with other renters where their parents are stressed out, having to work sometimes two jobs. 90% of the people that we serve are single mothers and it's very difficult for them to pay that kind of rent and provide for their family. So they're stressed out. That can cause childhood trauma. And there's other factors that could eventually lead to homelessness for that child in the future. So really, the best way for us, and the reason I took this job, is to affect the root causes of potential homelessness. And this is ultimately the best way is to give a family the kind of stability that home ownership does in a way that renting does not. And they become taxpayers. So for this property, it would be on the improvement or the home, not necessarily the land, but they will be taxpayers contributing to the city that they live in. So our program serves low-income families that are between 30 and 60% of the area median income. We do go up to 80% just depending, but our target is 30 to 60% of that area median income. And they only pay 33% of their household income toward their mortgage. And that includes taxes, insurance and any other, you know, for in this case, that would include a lease fee that would help maintain the property. So that's taken into account when they go to get a mortgage and that's taken out of the equation for them. So they're not paying 33% plus, it's 33% total. And we would be focusing on Anacortes residents or people who are working in Anacortes that are here already and need affordable housing to be able to be fully part of this community. This is a project that we're currently working on in Mount Vernon and I just kind of wanted to show everybody what these homes look like. There's a couple of families that have moved in as well. And here's some of our previously built homes. And so if people are wondering, you know, will the homes be taken care of? Will the properties be taken care of? I drove around on Thursday of last week and took these pictures. So these are fresh pictures. Most of our homes do not have garages. Some of the homeowners have put in sheds, but they absolutely take care of their homes and their properties. Here's a couple of more photos. Like I said, this is, these were just taken on Thursday of this last week. And you can see one of them was built in 2018 and one of them was built in 2022. We've only had one turnover of a home. Most of our home buyers or homeowners stay in their homes. Some of them have paid off their homes with the 30-year mortgage. So these are not turned over on a regular basis, but they can turn over if somebody improves their situation and wants to move into a different home that, you know, maybe they can afford now. Then they would remain in affordability in the future based on land lease, which we're doing on our own, but the city would also have that requirement. And these are a couple of our home buyers. You can see one young woman, she's a single mother, who is working to build her own home. And that is required, they are required to work to build their own home, which gives them pride and ownership. It gives them the ability to maintain the homes. They're taught about mortgages and maintenance and, you know, all the things that I wish I'd learned before I bought my home. And then we have one young woman here, also a single mother, who works at Skagit Valley Hospital. So these are the kind of people that you're going to see living in these homes. They're people that work in the hospital, they're people that work in the grocery store, they work in the restaurants. They, they're people that you see every single day that are working hard and simply do not make enough money in today's economy to be able to purchase a home anywhere. If you think about, you know, some of you that have been longtime homeowners, if you thought about trying to go out and buy a home now, you probably couldn't either. And here's some more pictures of our current homeowners. These are families and single mothers that, you know, work hard and deserve to live a life that's not just paying for housing. Okay, let's talk about West Fifth Street. One of the things that the HACs team had talked about was reducing the number of units on the property. And, you know, this is something that the city and Habitat are working on together. This is not Habitat going in and saying, "We have to build five homes." This is, you know, a collaboration. The city is taking kind of the lead on a lot of this and we're acceptable to reducing it from five to three. If you think about, you know, just one more home, it's a double lot. If you think about just one more home on there, may not make a huge difference in the neighborhood, but that's one more family in Anacortes that will have a home, have stability and have home ownership build equity for their future and their children's future. So this is kind of a modified, this is not exactly necessarily what it would look like, but this is a modified view of what the property would look like with the three homes on it with six parking spots, which would be two parking spots per unit. Like I said, 90% of our home buyers are single mothers and they usually only have one car. And that is all I have for this presentation unless there are questions.
Okay, well, I'm sure we're going to get to a lot of comments. Okay, well, I'm sure we're going to get to a lot of comments, so I think where the council wanted to go.
You're done with me?
Yeah, well, no, we definitely want to have, but are there questions maybe on the presentation from council real quick, if there was anything there?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters?
Just for some level setting, I think it's useful to point out that we have been trying to adapt the project, first of all, by reducing the number of units from five to three. Three is the minimum number for a cottage-style development. We've been looking at the stormwater, which is a particularly sticky wicket, given the projected expense that Public Works has very preliminarily calculated to adjust the existing stormwater infrastructure in the area. It might be cost prohibitive for the entire project, either a Habitat project or some other private project in that area. Don't really know as of yet, and we'll have to figure that out further. I think that we, because we have never leased property in this manner before, and we've never had a Habitat project in Anacortes before, it has been somewhat unknown water and an unknown path for us to tread, and we've been trying to figure that out. I think the objective here tonight, as reflected in the cover memo, is to hear from the public on the project and the aspects that the public does or does not like, and then for council to make, again, some preliminary decision about number of units we want to pursue or don't want to pursue. And then Habitat would need to pursue another Development Review Group meeting, if they are allowed to at all, for a reduced number of units, if that's what we decide, because they would need, again, to get better definition on what would be required in terms of infrastructure and what those costs are. So I think our, our objective here tonight is to listen, to take that in, and then to identify, again, in a preliminary way, how to proceed.
Yeah, and I just would like to say that there is a lot of work still to do. You know, we haven't really even said, yes, this is a project we could do, because we have to explore it so much more.
All right, so with that, I will turn it over for some public comments. I know a lot of folks wanted to, want to comment on this one. I will ask, if you're, if you're saying the same thing as your neighbor, go ahead and just ditto that, and you can move on. I think we've, council certainly heard from the public on this project quite a bit, and we'll want to continue hearing from you. But, as always, I go to who signs up first on the sheet, and I have Rose Mallon signed up, so come on up. And again, state your name, because for the record and where you live, just the city.
Hi, I'm Rose Mallon, I live in Anacortes. I don't live in the West Fifth area, so I can imagine that some people don't believe I should have an opinion or a right to opinion, but I believe all of us do, because this is crucial to all of Anacortes, and really beyond Anacortes. It's an issue for everywhere in the country. I applaud whoever thought of the unique solution of leasing city land, because you take out of the equation the biggest stumbling block to people being able to buy a home, the cost of the land. So whoever thought of that, kudos. Having the city of Anacortes involved as a long-term, sorry, involved long-term as the lessor should also help assuage neighbors' fears about what will happen when, down the road, the Habitat properties change hands, since all buyers, initial and subsequent, will need to meet the stringent specifications that Habitat requires of all their partner buyers. I know that's a big issue. In one of the previous meetings, people were bringing up a different development that was done before I moved here, and they weren't happy with what happened with those properties down the road, that I don't think will happen with Habitat, because you will all keep your eye on everything. The council meetings in the last month have certainly been filled with worries of the neighbors adjacent to the subject property. I have attended several, and I'm so sorry to have lacked the nerve to talk publicly before, but here I am. I understand the hesitation of the neighbors in those areas and their reservations, but I hope that these can be met and addressed so that the project can move forward. I can imagine that people who live on West Fifth must think that no one but they have any skin in the game, but we do, as I expressed previously. I hope that I correctly interpret, and I do understand this now, I wrote this before everybody was talking, that you have adjusted or you are planning to adjust from five units to three. That certainly meets a lot of the complaints that were voiced at previous meetings. Habitat is such a wonderful organization with a terrific track record. It will be a shame to lose this opportunity to work with them. Please persevere. Please, everybody, find a way to compromise and find accommodation to be able to achieve this. The neighborhood is certainly in a tizzy over this change, of course they are. Few people embrace change. Density is coming. I don't see how we avoid density. Nobody likes density, it's going to change the feel of Anacortes, but I think we have to see the future. The end result, having a model for affordable housing in Anacortes, and even perhaps one that can be used elsewhere in the county or beyond, is so worth your efforts. Thank you in advance for all your efforts on behalf of your constituents.
Thank you very much, and thank you for staying on time. It was perfect. Next up, I've got signed up Tom Sweeney, Habitat. And we don't start the timer until you start talking, so. And make sure the light's on, and state your name one more time.
Thank you, Tom Sweeney, Anacortes. First of all, I'd like to tell this lady right here, I'm all for Habitat. Matter of fact, I'm quite sure we even donate to it every year. Okay. What we are having a problem with as neighbors is that we went from five to three houses, and we're saying the city can find you a much better place than that corner, for the children that are going to live in there and for everything else.
Yeah. I would ask you to address the council.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, if you look at where this is located, on Fifth Street, if you go up to the corner there, I think it's Jackson Avenue, and you go one and a half houses, you will find that the street is another six feet wider with sidewalks. When that new development was put in, they stopped right there, okay? Now, I don't know if anybody's looked at that, but that's what they did. So, excuse me, if you would bring that street down like it's supposed to, all the way down West Fifth, I think I'd probably have to resurvey that lot, okay? So with that, with that in mind, also that creek that runs through there, it's not stormwater, it's a creek. I've been there for 14 years, it's run all summer long, not stormwater, okay? And then, if you go to West Fifth, and you go, you turn on Hanford, there's small homes that were probably built in the 40s and the 50s, maybe 1,000 square foot. When I drove by there tonight, we had 10 cars on, on West Fifth. 10 cars, okay? We have that all the time. People don't have any driveways, they don't have any place to put their vehicles, you know? So where do they park? They park out on the street. 10 cars, it happens all the time. You can make it through there, but you have to be very careful. West Fifth is a very wide street, okay? It's probably one of the widest streets in that whole area up there. Excuse me, you got, go. And also, as was mentioned before, when you put all of these homes on here for Habitat, you've got to think of your children. There's no place to play in the backyard? That alley, if you go up there and look at that alley, the alley comes to the end, and then it jumps out, and then it goes. The alley isn't right where it, it actually is on probably somebody's property that's here tonight, part of it, so, yeah, it is. So, that alley has to be redone. I don't know if you guys, has anybody came up there and actually looked at that? Done some surveys, done some, hey, you know, I was in construction for 35 years, I, if I went up there, I couldn't believe that you'd try to put three homes on that property. You've got to have some property someplace else to give to these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have anybody else signed up, but I'm sure there's some folks that want to come and speak. Yep, I see one hand in the back there, and then I'll come up front. So, middle way, yeah, stand up if you're raising your, yeah, there you go. Come on up. And then I'll move my way up to the front and into the back again. I saw a couple other hands. It does help to sign up, but it's okay.
Xuam Mu, I live in Anacortes. Good evening, Mayor Miller, council members, and everyone in the room, and also on Zoom. You know, first, I want to say to the Habitat for Humanity representatives, yes, we support Habitat Project. I personally involved in two Habitat houses in Auburn, Washington, and facilitated with donation of materials and labor. And I also want to thank Mayor Miller for the press release on April 22nd. It provided background and clarity of how the city arrived at five two-story, 1,200-square-foot homes, AKA cottages. It appears that, under this new Cottage Housing 2019 ordinance, half of the street, and like the gentleman just mentioned, the Fifth Street is pretty wide, half of the street and half of the alley's square footage were added onto the lot, beautiful square footage. So that is 35% inflation from 16,500 square foot to 22,000 square foot. So, from that, we can understand, from the city's perspective, they didn't even go to the maximum six cottages. And there's still room left, because by adding half of the street, half of the alley, it's 22,000, and we all know the lot is not. And none of the cottages can actually extend to the street or to the alley. The streets are for motor vehicles, and bikes, recumbent, and the road bike, I've seen both of them, and also people on battery-powered wheelchairs, pedestrians, and in addition, streets and alleys should be open and accessible at all times for emergency vehicles and EMTs, and that is very important in case of emergency. So, that's why the neighbors have been coming up and trying to help the city council members to understand that the original five-home design has an overcrowding issue and presents a major challenge for traffic safety, both on West Fifth as well as the main corridor, Kansas Avenue going downhill. Again, I would echo a neighbor's recommendation from two weeks ago, we should first review Cottage Housing 2019 ordinance to restore contingency approval and the public notification for this and any future projects. And no one knows traffic safety, parking availability, and drainage better than the people who live there. To build trust and spend the taxpayers' money responsibly, it is only appropriate that the city treat the residents of Anacortes as equal partners and include the neighbors in developing lease requirements and architectural design for this and the future projects. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Okay, so a hand in the front, and I have to pretend like I don't know anybody's name. And, but please state your name and city.
Certainly. I'm Vicki Stosh, I live at 2003 39th Street in Anacortes. I'm here tonight to speak on my behalf, and also I have a statement from my neighbors, who in fact were owners of a self-help housing on Down Jones Way, and they have some really cool things to say, but I'll leave that for you to read. Thank you, council members, and Mayor Miller, for the opportunity to express my support for a proposed Habitat project here in Anacortes. I hope this is the first of many. I am a former board member and president of a Habitat chapter in central California, and have participated, not only as a volunteer, but also helped out on a couple of women's builds, which I think you do here in, hopefully you will in the future if not. I welcome Habitat to our community, I can't speak about how credible an organization it is. Recently, a couple, a year and a half ago, I had the pleasure of working with the Habitat Board here in Skagit to help them develop their strategic plan, and part of that strategic plan was to build more homes and multifamily, multifamily properties. We need desperately more affordable homes, as you know. Habitat can help with that by building these townhouses. A few things that have been stated, but I want to accentuate. Families meet the income requirements, they have to have good credit, they take home ownership classes required, and they have to qualify and seek their own home mortgages through a lending institution. This is not a giveaway program. Families are from the community, they either live here or they work here, and we know, and many of the employers here have said, "We need affordable homes." All the families, I believe, put in 500 hours of work, unless they happen to be disabled, and then there's other alternative things that they can do. And amazingly, families do so well, because the children are finally in a stable environment. The kids statistically over the years, not just with Habitat and other self-help homes, those kids do much better, they get better educations, they end up being professionals, i.e. my neighbors' children. I totally understand the hesitancy of some citizens, but I believe through sufficient education, collaboration, and discussion, this whole issue can be resolved, and I'm hoping that, that the project can go forth on Fifth Street. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do we leave these with the?
Yeah, you can, we can put them, make them part of the record. Okay, in the back, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, since we're, nobody knows anybody. My name is Pat Barrett, I live at 1201 Fifth Street here in Anacortes, and I am just here to speak out in favor of this project. I think that there's a lot of challenges with it. Certainly, the, the neighbors have raised challenges with it, we all need to be listening to one another. I do appreciate the fact that you're apparently not going to try to put five homes where there should be three, or maybe three is a better spot. You know, pushing stuff down someone's throat is never a good idea. We, as a family, are small business owners in town, and my son expressed to me recently that one of the biggest risks to small business owners in Anacortes is the cost of housing. If you cannot afford, they can't afford to pay people to purchase a home in Anacortes at $500,000 for a starter home. I mean, that's about a $3,700 a month payment, even if it's VA, no down payment. That's pretty hard to do, especially when you can't pay your people more than $3,000 or $4,000 a month and still stay in business. So we, as a community, need to put on our big-boy pants and realize that many of us have to give up much, or very little in some ways, to provide housing for those less fortunate than us, and those that are living and working in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sure there's some more folks that want to address the council? Or we've heard, we've heard, okay, come on up.
My name's George Salaca, and I live here in Anacortes. All right. I've already been up here speaking to you guys once before, that was the initial, let's burrow it down to three. That was prior to me finding out that Habitat for Humanity does have extra property here in Anacortes, is that true? Not quite sure. I think that's true, but I do understand that there's like no access to it. So, how about working a different solution, besides giving up the property over on West Fifth Street, to build access to that property so they can actually put houses up there? That's just a solution, all right? I am a little hesitant on having more children, more vehicles, judging by the graph that was up there, not the graph, the picture that was up there, parking in the alley still. Judging by the graph that was up there, not the graph, the picture that was up there, parking in the alley still. That's not good, all right? I do have to admit, I have a couple large dogs, and I'm pretty sure there's a few neighbors back here that walk down that alley and scare the living pants off of them. All right? It's not because the dog's vicious. It's because he's still a puppy, all right? There's other things that go on that property. Every morning I wake up, I leave my house at 4:00 in the morning. There's deer, rabbits, animals out there that call that home. We have owls that go up in there, birds that make noise, bees in the woods using the flowers from there, the blackberry bushes, vines, everything else that we have growing there that sustain that small habitat of woods that we have. Those animals continue to come back. My fear is, once this goes and these houses come up, flooding will be an issue. Couple years back, I had to raise property. I had to bring up the land a little bit to not have it stopping what? Walk out my yard and I sink down two feet, you know? Aside from that, that's really all I can think of right now. I'm a little nervous, but please, if there's another solution, another option, another way we can make this happen, that to me is just not the best property for that to happen. That location, the traffic up and down that street gets busier and busier every month. Not year, not day. Every month, there's more and more vehicles running up and down that street, including delivery services. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. And again, there's not going to be any action from the council tonight. I think what council is trying to do is get to where maybe there's consensus on the number of, number of units so that maybe we can get to a lease agreement, and then ultimately that Habitat can start doing the, some of the pre-design work to answer all those other questions. So, anybody else that's going to help with that? Okay, all right, I got three hands come up. We'll go all the way in the back, all the way in the back, green shirt. And again, please state, state your name and city.
Howdy. My name is Tarn Ohana. I'm a resident of Anacortes. I live on West 4th Street in this neighborhood. Used to live in Old Town. I wanted to thank the council and the mayor for having this ability to open up and have some public comment. People come in. Looks like it's a very popular issue. As some people saw, I was able to bring some of my children here to be part of the meeting. They're distracted. I see a lot of playgrounds here, everywhere with kids. Anacortes is not a playground. Anacortes is not a playground for the rich and retired. It's not a playground for people to pretend is frozen in amber. People are struggling. Families are struggling in our community. Multi-generational families here are being broken apart due to the cost of housing. And this is not just about people in the service economy. People who come here to work at the hospital have to live in hospital-owned housing in order to get four years, in order for them to work for us. The Habitat for Humanity proposal, five houses, I think, is extremely acceptable. We have a lot of people who think that is not a good idea. Cutting that from five to three is cutting out two families that we could have as neighbors. It's doubling the parking requirement, which is frankly blasphemous, paving over part of Fidalgo Island for additional car storage. The street in front of this development proposal is at least 36 feet wide, which is ample for two lanes of parking and the required 20-foot minimum for emergency services access in the International Fire Code and the Anacortes Community Code. It's not just a moral imperative here for us to provide housing where people can live, not just because those who are most vulnerable are dying in our region, multiple people a day from exposure, but also I think it's a good value for our community. $1 peppercorn lease, imagine trying to provide three or five units that the city provides and builds itself. That's minimum $250,000 probably, if you get a good deal. So unless you're seeing $750,000 to 1.2 million for this lot, to take that money somewhere else, you're getting a good deal. We are getting a good deal. Looks like I'm running out of time, so I'll thank you again. Have a great evening. Good luck.
Thank you. All right, so I saw a hand in the middle on, yeah, black shirt. We're still on, right? Yep. And name and city, please.
My name is Mike Wanger, and I live on West 4th here in Anacortes. And I've been up here before, and I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your, your work to reduce the number from five to three. I think that's a big step forward. As one of the adjacent properties and some of our other neighbors have expressed, one of our biggest concerns is the alleyway. And again, you have made some big steps. I'd love to see that addressed more with the parking in the back, the garbage in the back, possibly, where the fronts, the front of the street would be accessed. None of the properties in the West 3rd to West 7th areas use the alleyway as far as a paved street or access. A lot of it's overgrown and wet and is maintained usually like once a year by the city. I'd love to see that, that the parking and the garbage addressed in the front of the property or on the property, if at all possible. One of the other concerns is the, we do get a lot of drainage off the alleyway, and it comes into the properties that are on the West 4th side of the alley. And so several of the homes already have sump pumps to capture that drainage. So, and that could be part of the thing you guys are talking about, the stormwater issue. But that would certainly be a major issue for the adjacent properties that we could address that. If any access was put back there, we'd certainly need to help us to not get additional drainage coming into those properties. One other thing that we would really hope to see is, such as George addressed, would be the retention of as many trees as possible. There's tons of birds and owls and other wildlife that have hidden in there for so many years. It's overgrown, so we want to try to keep that as much as possible as well. Other than that, I appreciate your time, and thank you again for trying to reduce those properties and help us with this stuff. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, I saw a hand on this side of the... I thought I saw it earlier. Maybe you've changed your mind. Okay, so I'll turn it over to council. Again, I think council, it's pretty clear if we, maybe we get a consensus from council. But I'll turn it over to council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I apologize in advance. I have a few things to say and questions to ask. First, one of the, the things that I feel really good about is the last few weeks, the people that have, or our neighbors, because I do live in this neighborhood. Some of you have been to my house, so a lot of folks have been up there and have seen the property. I'm really glad to hear that there's nobody, or not many voices, very few, coming forward to say, "Don't build Habitat for Humanity. We don't want this." It sounds like our neighbors have been coming forward to talk about real concerns, like the number of units, like stormwater, like parking. And I'm encouraged by the fact that it sounds like council is listening and has been, been willing to, to make some adjustments to the plan. I had a couple quick questions for Ms. Tate that I think would be helpful for some of the folks to hear about. When we talk about, when we talk about taxes, like, like property taxes, and you mentioned that that is wrapped up into the price of the home, does that mean that these, that they're, that these homes are not having to pay full property tax?
No. They pay full property tax, but when they purchase the home, the, we, we know what the property tax is going to be, or there is a base assessment that does fluctuate, but we'll get a base assessment of what the taxes for the home would be. And that's taken into consideration when we're talking about 33% of their income going towards their mortgage. So that's included. That cost is included. That does not reduce the tax at all, other than the land, because that would not be taxed. Just like, you know, we have leased, leased now. Our leased land is not taxed, but the homeowners pay taxes on the actual home or improvement on the land.
So if the property tax goes up, for example, that is absorbed by Habitat?
No. That is paid by the homeowner. So that can fluctuate if it goes up or down, can fluctuate slightly, but it's not an exorbitant amount.
So they're being taxed just like the rest of us, basically? So there's no special, okay. Can you talk a little bit more, you put some information in about the, the selection process. Can you give, give me and some of our neighbors here just a couple more specifics about some of the requirements that you require for folks to become a homeowner of Habitat? And, and also, sorry, part two. Can you also, is there any follow-up during that process to make sure things are still in compliance, for lack of a better word?
Absolutely. Yeah, so we have, we do a selection. It's based on a few things. One is their willingness to partner. So they have to agree to put sweat equity into, to help build their home. And two is that they have to qualify for a loan at a bank. So that means they have to have a credit score that, that a bank will accept. They have to have a good debt-to-income ratio, you know, all the things that any, anybody else that qualifies to purchase a home has to qualify to do. It's just based on a lower amount, so they don't qualify for $500,000. They qualify for $100,000 or $150,000, which is what they would pay for the home, even though it costs us more than that to build, but we subsidize that with grants and other things. And then they have to do education, so they have to take classes in mortgage and insurance. And we do, because we're doing a lease, we, we talk about the lease. So they have to do all kinds of education programs, a certain number of hours, which is required not only by Habitat but also by the state. So if we get any state funding towards the build of the home or down payment assistance, that's required by the state as well. And we have Home Buyer Support Committee, and we have volunteers that walk side by side with the home buyer throughout the process. So the entire time from selection to a year after they move into their home, they have support available to them to help them through anything they may need. And then we do also, you know, with our leased land, any common grounds, we take care of, things like that. And so we do check up on the, on the properties.
Okay, thank you. And I also did want to say that, you know, you have been very clear, because you mentioned this earlier, you have been very clear all along that Habitat is willing to do what the city requests or what the city needs. And that, you know, you're, because I think the first time you were up here, I asked you, well, what if it was one house or two houses or three houses? And you have always been very clear that what we, as the city, require is, is what you will do. So I just, that, that's been very clear.
With a little bit of a caveat to that, because, you know, as was mentioned here, there's stormwater requirements that are possible, sidewalk and curb, alley improvements, different things that may be required of us to put money into. And so for one home, that wouldn't make any sense for us. Three homes make sense, but really less than that, you know, it wouldn't be worth it to us to put that money in to just build one or two homes.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And I think most of the rest of my questions are probably going to be for staff or i.e. my, my council members up here, but, but thank you. So it seems like that this project has actually been around since about 2018, is what I've kind of read, and it's, and we've had a few different iterations of it. There have been a lot of, I was looking in the packet at, it looks like it's from the wonderful Grace Pollard. On August 25th, 2023, it looks like we did, I don't even know what this is called, but some kind of evaluation throughout several different departments that went through and requested things, advised of things, and I just highlighted a few of these because it seems like that these are questions that have been around since even as early as 2018. So I'm just curious as to any of the progress on, on some of this, or if any of this will be addressed before we, we are asked to vote on this. So one of the first things that came up for me, sorry, I highlighted here, so I've got to just go through this, okay. It talked about public street improvements required. I think that even Mr. Walters mentioned earlier that there is a lot of problems in that area with the streets, sidewalks, et cetera, that Kansas and West 5th intersection. Personally, I think it's a little unfair for us to put all of that onto Habitat for Humanity and still expect them to build the, the houses. So my, my question would be, and it doesn't have to be answered now, because obviously we're going to bring this up next week. Is there a plan to do some of the improvements that are being asked about in this 2023 document? It talks about pedestrian streets, improvements around West 5th, the intersection, the right-of-way, you know, non-conforming driveway access, all that kind of stuff. I'm just wondering if there's a plan to, to do that. I'm also wondering about stormwater, and I'm sorry I had it hot. It says here, and I know that you gave reference to, we'll work with the existing stormwater capacity. But in 2023, whoever did this, August 25th, 2023, whoever did this stormwater analysis, it says, "Public records indicate that there is no direct storm line stubbed to this property." There is an existing public conveyance system along the westerly boundary line that conveys stormwater runoff from the public alley to West 5th Street, but no easement has been recorded to this millency. There's deficiencies identified in West 5th Street. The project will need to address this when designing the improvements to Kansas Avenue on West 5th. Have we talked about any of this, or is there a plan to do any of the, because I'm, I'm for building the houses, the three, the three houses. I just see that there's a lot of things in here that they're asking for, and I'm just curious if there's a, a plan for that at all. What are the stormwater requirements? Are we going to pave the alley to, to full width? It, it looks like the Chief Harris is fine with the fire suppression requirements. And then this question has been around for a long time, and, and I do think it's a fair question. What are the wetlands mitigation requirements? So for example, if we've been looking at this since 2018, and that has kind of been, been brought up, I know this is different than the two houses that were originally proposed in, in 2018. But have we done any work since then to, to look at that? So those are just some of the things that I'm wondering about. And then it talks about in here too, and again, this was all just stuff that, this is the development review memo. It talks about how during the previous general meeting, discussion regarding potential wetlands, it's not determined if that visit ever took place by the planning associate left the position. Do we know if anybody ever did that, that visit up there?
So you're kind of asking a lot of really good staff questions, but typically that, that is not done until there's a formal application. Because that's, that's, that's staff time, and that's money. And so I think it's a little bit, it's getting a little bit ahead of...
Cart ahead of the horse there. Okay, no problem.
Where Habitat needs to say, hey, it's the city, when we do the lease, are we going to say how many houses? And then they're going to come to another preliminary design review. And again, John's not, Mr. Coleman's not here to, to correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, that, that'll be that process. And all those questions will have to be answered, because nobody gets to build a house in Anacortes or really anywhere in Washington State without following stormwater.
All right, so I'll skip ahead to the couple of questions I have directly about the lease then. So in 4.1, Section E, it says, "No off-site improvements are required to develop the property consistent with permitted use." Sidewalks, improvements abutting the property, alley improvements from the property to the nearest street are accepted, are, are accepted from this limitation. My question on that one is, does that mean, and this might be for the city attorney, I'm not sure, but does that mean that we're kind of saying that nothing has to be done to this property in order to build these houses? No, like stormwater might have to run all the way down the alley. No, like, stormwater might have to run all the way down the alley. Is that adjacent to the property, or?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters. We just talked about that quite a bit in the Public Works Committee meeting. Number one, new development in Anacortes, as the mayor just mentioned, new development in Western Washington needs to comply with stormwater rules all the time.
Okay.
And those new rules have been incrementally increased in significance in 2012 and 2019. So they're continuing to evolve and be more and more stringent. So if that hasn't been everyone's experience in the past, that may be because it was under a different regulatory regime. But it is changing on an ongoing basis. Number two, though, I think stormwater would not be conveyed down the alley. The stormwater system is in the street. But the stormwater system in the street is apparently, and some of this needs to be worked out with a little bit more detail. And the information that Public Works already had was from an earlier review, not particularly specifically for this project. But the stormwater system in the street doesn't seem to be sized significantly enough to handle additional contributions from new development. So that would mean, no question, because all development has to handle stormwater, that that stormwater system's got to be upsized by the city, by new development, by Habitat, by somebody, in order to convey the stormwater. And so that is a big question that needs to be figured out. And needs to be figured out in the context of this development or any other development that would occur on that site. But also, as we've heard, needs to be figured out in the context of existing development that is having existing problems with stormwater. So there's not going to be a satisfactory answer, I don't think, tonight to that question. But as has been indicated, what Habitat really needs to do is if we are comfortable with a smaller number of units, they need to have that pre-application conference again, meeting with the internal development review group again, to analyze new square footages and new impacts, and then have Public Works figure out, you know, what the stormwater impacts are and what those costs are.
Okay. I know you're a details guy, so I'll also say, it still says in 7.1, "A construction of five dwellings and associated improvements in the lease that..."
Hasn't been changed.
Hasn't been changed yet, okay. The other question I had, and maybe this is a legal thing. It talks about local preference in 7.3, because our goal, obviously, is to provide affordable housing for people that live, work, have children in Anacortes. So it says, "Local preference in selecting households to whom dwellings will be transferred, tenant must give preference to households in which, in which at least one adult lives in Anacortes, works in Anacortes, has children in Anacortes schools." So if, I guess my question is, does that have to be give preference? Or can we just say it has to be that way? Like, I mean, if we're acknowledging that there's several folks in Anacortes that need this affordable housing, that live here already, I know we've said it a lot, can we change that to be a requirement rather than a preference?
You're looking at me.
Well, I don't know if it's against the law.
No, I think you're looking at council for changes to the lease, much like 7.1, so...
Does it have to be a preference, or can it be a requirement? Because is there any legal thing that we couldn't say that because of?
So I'm not aware of any legal prohibition against making that a requirement. I think in the past, and we've not done anything that's apples to apples to this, but a preference would mean that if there isn't an eligible applicant who's in the city of Anacortes, then maybe that it could be opened up to somebody else. So since there are, you know, requirements for qualification, my guess is that's why that language was chosen. But to answer your original question, I don't know why that could not be amended in the lease.
Seems like there would be, I mean, if we're considering something like this, it seems like there's probably way more than just three families in Anacortes that probably would need this kind of housing. So I'd like to, I would like to see that change, if possible. Oh, this is a good one, because it comes up a lot. And again, I hope everybody out there is learning something as well from the fact that I don't know any of this, or a lot of this as well. Maybe that helps some of all of us to get educated. 9.1, "Maintenance and repair by tenant." So during the term, the tenant must maintain the entirety of the property, including its principal components and other improvements, including without limiting the general of the foregoing of the roof, foundation, water, sewer, gas connection, pipes, mains, plumbing, dah 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 dah. Ordinary wear and tear, damage, all repair work must be done. So not that I think that this is going to happen, so I don't want to like, because I don't believe, I've seen the other properties that Habitat for Humanity builds, they've been great, well-maintained. But if there were to be an issue where all of a sudden it becomes less than a desirable, like, for instance, I know exactly what Mr. Sweeney was talking about, I know the house he's talking about, I drive by it every day too, that has 10 cars parked right in front of it. It's a lot. Would, that's not something that Habitat would then have to come in. Like, if we all of a sudden had two abandoned cars in there or anything, does anybody have to do anything about that? Is there anything in the lease that talks about who would have to take care of a problem like that? I don't know if that's a question, I don't know who to ask, I'm sorry.
I think we have codes that cover that, that are maybe beyond the terms of the lease, but it's certainly up to council what you want to put in the lease.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, code enforcement's available in any case, for any property in town. But the objective in the lease, and that's a very standard lease provision, the no-waste provision, would also provide that the city has a contractual relationship with Habitat, Habitat being the entity that is responsible under the lease, to avoid those maintenance problems and to make sure that those things are fixed. When we proposed reduction in the number of units from five to three, what we also proposed is that we make additional edits to the lease to try to address any of these other issues that, you know, we can reasonably identify as concerns, so that we've got an additional mechanism to make sure they are not problems.
And again, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to throw sticks in the mud here or hold this up. I just, I feel like because of the way this has been rolled out and because of the lack of education and involvement to the public, this kind of stuff right now, I just bring up because I don't want it to become an issue once we decide to move forward, and then the neighbors aren't aware of what's happening. And so that's part of why I'm bringing a lot of this up now. I think that might be, oh, I liked 16, quiet enjoyment. So fear not, everyone, tenants will have quiet enjoyment. So I know that there won't be any wild and crazy parties. Everybody will still be able to have their own quiet enjoyment. You know, I do think too, though, two other things I'd like to say. One, I am in favor of this project. I know that not a lot of my neighbors, I'm sorry, those of you out there that are going to disagree with me on this. I am in favor of this project for the three houses. You know, my wife and I bought a house here in 2021, just barely, we could barely afford it. We're two bankers. So I'm very much in favor, we need more like this. What I like about this as well is, you know, I'm not a big fan of the cottage code in general. I know it's great for diversity and diversification of property, but I think as we can look at some of the recent cottages that have been built for affordable housing, that come in more than I can afford, I don't think cottage housing is the way to solve the problem. However, this is a unique project. This is a project where we will essentially be controlling the amount that the house will sell for at a truly affordable rate for the next 100 years. So that, to me, is a win not just for the one family that we can initially get into that house, but it's going to be a win in 50 years when somebody sells it again, or in 75 years. This isn't something, by my eyes, and I've done a lot of research on this and a lot of looking into this, and it's really moved my needle. This is something that will continue to benefit the families that live there and the families that could potentially live there. I came in 2022 and said that I thought five was way too many. This is before I was even on council. And I'm glad to see that it has been scaled back. I do hope that as we continue to move through this process, and a lot of the questions that have been questions for several years, that we as a council, as a city, as a planning department, do a much better job of reaching out to our community and let them know specifically, when we're dealing with city-owned land, what changes are going to be coming, how they can participate in that process. Because I don't think that we needed to necessarily have four months of, at times, a little contentious comments, well-founded. But when we could have done a much better job as a council, as a city, as an organization as a whole, bringing our neighbors into this process and educating them on this from the beginning. So my hope is that as we move into the comprehensive plan for 2025, we take a look at what we've seen come forward, all of these comments. People, in Anacortes, our people want to be engaged. They want to be a part of the process. So I hope as we go forward, we can consider all of that when we're putting together the next comprehensive plan. I'll spare you all anymore.
Okay, so the big thing that I want to be able to take away is make sure I've got consensus from council of modifying the lease to three as opposed to five units.
I'd also like to see that required part changed from a preference to required, if possible.
And then the other, and of course, the big thing to help Habitat move forward, and Miss Tate to walk away with some ability, is that certainly consensus from council that we want to engage in this lease of this city-owned land. And I think the answer is yes on that too, okay. All right, any other comments, council?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think that there are a number of elements here that we could probably find consensus among council on. One, where the various changes to the lease, several of them that Mr. Fantini highlighted. Another might be to ask Habitat, if they're willing, to ask their architect to prepare an alternative site plan. The one in the packet is just a sketch, it's not, the three-lot or the three-house version is not informed by any architecture degree. A different site plan could even be loaded off the street instead of the alley, and an architect could take a look at that and see what else they could come up with, and that might be more desirable. I don't know, they might not find that it works, but they could take a look at that. I think as well, Mr. Fantini's comments are well-taken about the public education and engagement piece. And I think that we on council are somewhat handicapped there because we on council have spent so much time on housing. We have a former Housing Authority Commissioner on council. We have a former Home Trust employee on council. We have two people on council that grew up here in Anacortes and watched people that we grew up with not be able to stay here. People that graduated from Anacortes High School with us not be able to stay in the town that we all called home growing up, that we all expected could be our home. And some of us went away to college, and some of us came back and found that the prices had risen so much and availability was so low, that that just wasn't even an option anymore. And I think we therefore have, you know, a really visceral understanding of how important housing is to having a whole community here. And I do think that that is council's vision, to have a whole community with a vibrant downtown, with small businesses that can get employees who can live here, but also with excellent schools and excellent medical care. And those people who work in those schools and who work in the hospital are not paid at such a rate that they can afford the house that they live in. And me as an attorney, and others on council, and maybe quite a few of you in the audience, might not be able to buy your own house today with the income that you currently make or that you would have made when you were buying your house in the past, given today's prices. And that is not sustainable. And that's not an Anacortes-specific problem. It is, to some extent, a national problem. It is very much a Western Washington problem. But we have to struggle with that problem until we get to a better place, which is going to be a while. But it's a long struggle, and it's a struggle that we have to engage in, and we can't dismiss. Because it is integral to the Anacortes that I grew up in, that my parents grew up in. It is integral to the Anacortes that had the hope of building a life here that my grandparents experienced when they lived here. And we have to preserve that. Now, I am also in favor of having harmonious neighborhoods. That is something that we should strive for as well. And I don't think that those two goals are incompatible. I think neighborhoods that are compatible and harmonious are not necessarily homogeneous. Homogenous, they don't have to be all the same, and too much sameness is a problem as well. And if you see the more traditional development patterns that, for instance, we have in Old Town, there is a lot of incongruity while there is harmony. There are houses that are big and houses that are small. And there's a duplex across the street from me and a triplex across the street from me. I don't have any problem with those. But you could imagine, and I can imagine, being very concerned about them when somebody proposes them. So I definitely understand that. But I think that we can find a way forward here. I think we have listened over the past couple of months, and tonight, to the concerns of the community. And I think that we can largely address a lot of them. Maybe not all of them, certainly not all of them. But I think we can make a path forward here. It's going to take some more work, we got to figure out stormwater. We got to look at some alternative site plan options. It sounds like we're okay with three, we, the council, at least, is okay with three. But there's a path forward here. And this is going to be something, I think, that is really valuable as a model that we can use elsewhere in town, elsewhere on the island. Not cottage housing as a model necessarily, but Habitat, self-help, something that is more affordable, there just has to be. It was 2019 when the five-story building was permitted, and some of us were not particularly comfortable with that. And a lot of the neighborhood behind that building was uncomfortable with that. And we wrestled with that. A lot of people said, you know what actually could achieve affordability is Habitat for Humanity. And that's when our planning director at the time brought this forward to us as an option. And I think we embraced it at the time, because it seemed like it was quite a bit less of an impact than, say, a five-story building appearing in front of you. But I think we also are aware and sensitive to the issues of the neighborhood, stormwater being a really significant one, but others as well. So it's going to take us, I think, a little bit to puzzle through some of the other aspects of this. But I think we're committed to figuring it out, and figuring it out in a way that is acceptable, at least, to nearly everybody.
Okay, any other comments from council?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
I would like to make a recommendation to keep local preference as a preference. One of the things that I've seen done at places like different housing authorities is to have that preference, because one of the things that you want to make sure that as a housing provider you do is that you keep your pool as wide open as possible. And when you make things a requirement, remember, this is going to be a 100-year lease. In 20 years, if these three houses are full of people that have originally lived in Anacortes and one of them needs to turn over, if we have a requirement, and there are six people that need a house and none of them live in Anacortes, that house is going to go vacant. And so my recommendation would be to keep the local preference as a preference and not a requirement. If we wanted to put in something a little bit more related to mileage or make it Fidalgo Island instead of within the city limits of Anacortes, I think that that would be, you know, acceptable. But to shrink an opportunity to house people that need to be housed just makes me feel uncomfortable. uncomfortable. And then I did have a question for Ms. Tate, if I could, please.
Okay. She's still here.
Thank you. Do the homeowners pay a down payment for these houses? Or is it just all a monthly mortgage with escrow and insurance and everything else wrapped up in there?
They do pay a small down payment, which then goes to their escrow. I don't know the amount. It's like 1,500 or 1,600, $1,600 that they have to pay down. We do get down payment assistance, so some of the banks that we work with have their own down payment assistance programs. There's state, county, sometimes city, down payment assistance as well that helps us cover the cost of the build, and that's the way we keep the mortgage to the homebuyer low.
Okay. And can you give us an example of maybe the monthly payment that one of your more recent builds has for their mortgage?
I can tell you, the one that just closed qualified for her mortgage to be 150,000, and I believe her total payment is somewhere around 1,100 a month.
Okay.
So it's way less than a lot of rents. It's way less than the rent that she was paying to for her apartment. So, yeah, it's right around there. That's off the top of my head.
Well, and that's exactly the information I'm looking for. Parallel 49, 49th parallel, the new apartments that are up at 34th and Commercial start at 268 square foot for $1,200 a month. So someone is able to afford a whole house for less than they could pay for 300 square foot in Anacortes.
And they're not throwing that money away. It's going towards equity.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments, council? Okay, again, there's more to do on this one, and we'll get to it. Okay, moving along to Item 7B. We've got a bunch of contracts. We'll start with contract modification, lead and copper rule support and gap analysis. It's a discussion item with possible action, and we may get another reappearance of Mr. McDaniel for this one, but Mr. Rayum.
I'm going to take a swing at it, but I brought the expert, so. Mayor, council before you tonight is a contract amendment with HGR for the amount of $41,915. This adds to their existing contract to do a couple of very specific things, one of them being public communication. The lead and copper rule revision was a revision to an original rule from 1991. The impetus behind this is to actually test the water at the home or at the business and that type of thing since 1991. The new rule is for us to understand what materials are the service lines from the meter to the house. This is all kind of coming from the Flint, Michigan issue. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but they changed their water source and the water chemistry changed, and lead actually precipitated out of the service lines and killed children. It was a very horrible thing. They just now actually can use the drinking water or the water for showering and drinking just as of like last year. So this rule came out of that incident. It's important to point out that we had a survey of all staff here. We have not seen a lead part in our water system for at least 25 years, and that's just the history of people that are here that are still working here today. So the reason for the increase in their contract is that HGR, we need to really be careful about how we communicate to the public about the lead service line inventory. So we are going to be able to tell people whether or not their line is lead, which we don't think we have any, if it's unknown, which is the one that would probably be concerning. So we need to have some expertise in-house to help explain to people so that they're not completely frightened by the, when we tell them, we're not sure what your pipe is. And so HGR does this for different cities, different water purveyors throughout the United States, and so bringing their expertise in to make sure that we package and communicate effectively to the public about what it means when they get notification about their service line material type.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
And specifically there, you're talking about the line from the city's system to the house.
Yeah.
The line that is not the responsibility of the city.
Correct. But we are responsible for making sure that they know what that material is.
Right. But in our system that we are responsible for, we've identified no lead.
We haven't seen lead on the service side as well because we connect it to our meters. And so the last 25 years, we have not yet seen lead.
You, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you, but I think what you said is, on the service side, meaning the portion of the line between the city system and the residential system, you have not seen lead there either.
So the service side is from after the meter to the house. That's what we consider the service side of the system, which is private, and we have not seen lead. But we have to do this because it's a national rule that all water purveyors need to do.
Okay.
There's a couple of other things that a contract amendment addresses, one of which being tracking the service line type going forward. We don't currently track that, so just in case some new rules come down the line in the future, we have it in our GIS system so people know exactly what it is that their service line is made out of that goes to their house. The last piece is, those are the two, the real big ones. The other ones are like project management and just little adjustments to their budget to complete this additional work.
Right. Questions about the contract modification, council? All right, well, fairly well explained then.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Sounds like something we have to do. I move that city council authorize the mayor to sign a contract modification with HGR Engineering in under Contract 22285WTR001 in the amount of $41,915.14, increasing the total contract price to $223,245.14.
A motion by Mr. Fantini, a second by Mr. McDougal to approve the contract as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up, 7C, contract award 2024 sanitary sewer line rehabilitation. Mr. Rayum.
So before you use a contract, a new contract with Iron Horse LLC in the amount of $910,000 to line sewer pipes. They did that last year as well. We do an annual sewer rehabilitation project of $1.5 million. This $910,000 is just for the sewer lining portion of that funds. It'll line 9,743 feet of sewer pipe. These pipes have been selected because they are experiencing groundwater infiltration, root infiltration, cracks, that type of thing. So it helps us keep what's not wastewater out of the sewer pipes and keeps wastewater in the pipe. The, just so you note as well, there'll be another contract coming before council to get us to the $1.5 million target. That will be fractional, not lining, but actually taking out pipes and manholes and replacing them. So it'll be a separate contractor, separate contractor, separate contract coming probably in the next month or two.
Council questions? Again, part of our I and I program.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
So this is the section that we're doing. Do we do, and again, apologies for the question, do we do like a section of this like every year, or is this like on a, I'm assuming like a plan, and that this is the worst area that needs to be done?
Yeah, we do identify the worst areas to be done, and we do this every year apparently, which is a really good thing for the city this size to invest one and a half million dollars in the sewer rehabilitation is a really, it's a really good thing.
Yeah, council made that decision many years ago to finally really get on top of our I and I, and so, yeah, a million and a half, we probably need to look at upping that number, but that's what we're using. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
We have had discussions over the years. At one point, we were talking about doing another big sewer project and funding it with the money that we have been spending on I and I. And at the time, the justification, which is not from our current Public Works Director, but at the time, the justification was, well, I and I doesn't really work anyway. There's just so much of a system out there, you're just never going to be able to address it. Do you have a different view? And can you talk a little bit about that?
So there is some truth to that, but I would say that you have an aging infrastructure that's cracking, has roots intruding in it, and yeah, literally, we have video footage of water pouring into the sewer. Those things, if you don't address those, your sewer plant will become out of capacity. And so anything you can do to line your mains and everything else to try to keep the water out of there that's not sewage is good. But I think that former Public Works Director was referring to is actually trying to trace back, because there are places where houses are connecting their downspouts to the sewer. I have personally seen, when you get to the end of that line, it's almost guaranteed it's a widowed elderly individual that has no idea that was happening. They don't have the money to fix it, and you probably spent so much money to find them that it's just not, it's cost prohibitive to really get at that. So it's, when you look at it from that angle, yes, it probably makes more sense to actually just build a bigger sewer treatment plant, but if you don't take care of your system, you will be inundated with infiltrating water, and your sewer plant will be obsolete much quicker.
Well, we can spend a lot of money before we spend the money required to build a bigger sewage treatment plant, though, right?
Oh, yeah.
So I take it then that it is your recommendation that we continue to fund I and I at a significant number each year to try to make real progress on this.
Yeah, especially with the mains and the condition they're in. The, I would hope, I would imagine the former Public Works Director was actually trying to get to downspouts connected to your sewer system.
We did have conversations about that, yeah. But maybe there's some alternative program that can help with that, you know, associated with remodels or those kinds of things, because those things do happen over time. Okay, well, I think that's illuminating. Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Motions?
Mayor.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to move that city council authorize the mayor to sign Contract 24099SW001 with Iron Horse LLC in the amount of $910,278.14 for the 2024 sanitary sewer line rehabilitation project. Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Ms. Moulton to approve the contract as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up, 7D, contract award, replacement of Chevrolet Tahoe for police K-9 unit. It's a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Rayum and Chief Floyd, perhaps. Chief Floyd's going to take it, okay. He's been waiting patiently.
Good evening, Mayor Miller and members of council. It was nice, Mr. Rayum, to let me know he was going to let me take the lead on that as I was approaching, so thanks to our Public Works Department. I'm up here tonight to present to you our staff recommendation to replace the K-9 Tahoe ahead of the replacement schedule by one to two years, as we've had significant issues recently with mechanical breakdowns of our K-9 vehicle. Mr. Ludeman in the Public Works Department came across an opportunity for another agency that did not take possession of a vehicle that they had ordered, and he was able to tentatively secure that pending council approval to purchase it. Our current vehicle in the last two months has been towed to the dealership no less than four times for serious mechanical issues that they're still trying to convincingly tell us that they've fixed. So we'll see if we continue to have problems with it, but it has been a significant hindrance to the K-9 program. As you can imagine, that vehicle is outfitted with specialty transportation accommodations for the dog itself and the safety of the dog during transport to and from. So I'd ask tonight that council approve a purchase of this vehicle ahead of schedule.
All right, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The cover sheet indicates, the thinking is that this is going to be about six months earlier than anticipated, maybe because we won't receive this vehicle for quite some time, even if we order it now.
My understanding from Mr. Ludeman is it is already at a dealership in the state.
So maybe we will get it soon.
And he will have it sent to the company in Olympia that handles all the K-9 modifications. So they have their particular brand of equipment that is in this vehicle currently equipped to transport prisoners. They've agreed to swap that out for what our needs are for K-9 at minimal additional cost.
Okay. All right, yeah, I have good confidence in Mr. Ludeman's judgments, so it makes sense to me.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Just a quick question. I know that we at Public Safety Committee, as well as I think before council, talked about in two years, roughly two years, T-Bone will be done and we'll have a new dog, K-9, coming in, and we talked about possibly it would be a dog with additional skills. There's no, like, the vehicle we get now, we'd be able to use that for the same, right?
Correct.
It doesn't have to be refitted or anything like that for the new dog.
No.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to ask if the new car smell will affect T-Bone's ability, so I'm sorry. You don't answer that question. I just couldn't help it. All right, any other questions that are more germane? All right, a motion then, perhaps.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. I move that city council authorize the mayor to sign PO 24138ERR001 with Bud Clary Chevrolet in the amount of $74,080.15 for the purchase of a replacement Chevy Tahoe for the police K-9 unit.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Fantini to approve the purchase order as presented. Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, 7E is a contract award, wastewater treatment plant, outfall relocation, permitting and monitoring services. This is a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Rayum.
Yes, Mayor, council, before you, is a contract with Widener and Associates in the amount of $447,000 to perform permitting and environmental monitoring for the wastewater treatment plant, outfall relocation. The contract was before you at the April 22 council meeting when council directed staff to have additional information in the scope of work. We have worked with Widener to increase the amount of information we're provided in the scope, and they are here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. A couple of questions that were brought up at the April 22 meeting I had to have some answers for, and Task Two was asked, why Widener and not HGR for the construction storm or general permit? HGR does obtain those contracts, but they don't, they typically transfer those to the contractor. In this case, the city wants to retain the ownership of the construction storm or general permit, and we need to have our own monitoring done and our own oversight over the, because typically the contractor handles it, but because this is a FEMA-funded project, we want to remain in control of the permit requirements for the construction storm or permit. The other question I had was the, so Task Three, the marine mammal monitoring, that was a requirement by NOAA because we're doing in-water work, and they've had requirements that are specifics in the contract language there for you. And the last one was Task Five, the outreach, that task includes the pre-blast survey coordination with the public and then a weekly project website update over the 52-week period of the project. What I got?
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
I appreciate the additional content that you've added to the contract. I think it makes much clearer what the scope of work is. Are we paying for this with federal funds?
Yes.
This contract?
Yes.
Okay. I am a little bit concerned about the contract still. You tell me we need it. We're already under the gun. We're already under the, under the gun here, starting the project. I think we're going to approve it. But some of the tasks, you know, outsourcing website updates and communication with our residents, those kinds of things, I, I think that, my sense is we should be building that capacity internally, adding to our capacity internally, even though it costs us money. I mean, we've got lots of projects that we need project management for. I understand, you know, this one's moving ahead now. I get it, but it does make me a little nervous about how the, how the project overall is managed and how some of these components will all come together with a lot of moving parts.
I think that point is well taken. I think Public Works does a really good job of communicating with the public on a number of projects. This one obviously is, is a giant one, so we need that partnership.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Do we have a city archaeologist, or is that some, or we hire that out too? Will that be another contract coming forward for us to approve, or is that fitting in somewhere else?
That is in this contract.
That's the archaeologist?
Yeah, it was a subcontract, I think it was Dayton, I think it was called. We don't have an archaeologist on staff.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I move that the city council authorize the mayor to sign contract 20032SEW014 with Widener and Associates in the amount of $446,786.14 to provide wastewater treatment plant outfall, relocation, permitting, and monitoring services.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fantini, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the contract as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, last item on tonight's agenda is 7F. This is Resolution 3154. It's lodging tax funding for beer on the pier event. This is an action item, and Ms. Snyder's back up to do a brief intro.
Hello, you guys. We received an application for lodging tax funds from the City of Anacortis Chamber of Commerce to put up a tent to host the Beer on the Pier event this fall. They formerly used to work the event at the transit shed, but that is no longer an option for them. They requested $51,416 for seven days of a rental. That is three days to set up, two days of the event, and two days to tear down. The Lodging Tax Committee met on April 23rd. They make a recommendation of an award amount of $27,000 due to the fact that 35% of the ask was for rented flooring and 12% of the ask was for custom ceiling treatments, and so the Lodging Tax Committee wanted to take it down to some basic costs and are recommending $27,000 for this resolution.
Thank you, and I'll turn it over to the Lodging Tax Chair if you have anything to add to this one. Mr. Walters.
Yes, the Lodging Tax Committee, I think, was fairly unanimous in its evaluation of the request. We wanted to support the Beer on the Pier event, but because lodging tax may very well end up being the funding source for our new event center, we do feel compelled to constrain costs wherever we can. So the ceiling treatment was $6,000, the flooring was $18,000 of the total request. And a lot of lodging tax members had ideas and brainstorms about alternative places to put the tent and those kinds of things. That is not really the purview of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, but we offered the best advice we could. Notably as well, the quote for the tent is for a larger tent than the chamber actually anticipates renting. They anticipate renting a 50 by 100 tent, and in here, the quote is for a 50 by 150. So those numbers aren't quite the same. We asked them, do you want to bring us back a corrected quote, or do you want us to make a recommendation now so that it can get in front of council and they can have certainty that they will at least have some of the funding? And they more or less indicated that they would prefer to move it forward more quickly, and that's the commitment that I made to the chamber director, that we would make these decisions quickly and get them certainty about how much funding they're going to get from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, assuming council approves. So that's just some of the thought behind it.
All right, any questions from the rest of council? All right, well, then I'll have to ask for a motion then.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
I move to approve allocating up to $27,000 of 2024 lodging tax funds to the Chamber of Commerce for leasing a tent for the Beer on the Pier event.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve Resolution 3154 lodging tax funding for beer on the pier tent. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Fantini.
Just a moment while I savor the moment that I actually get to vote first on something instead of last. Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
It being no further business for the council, I will adjourn the meeting. Yeah, sorry, 7G was pulled at the beginning. Good night.